Meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Prophet Israel Barsh, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Father, we ask that your presence would be upon all the city council this day. As you let your divine wisdom come forth, that would be a blessing to all citizens in this particular city. We thank God for your strength upon all of us today. We thank you for your peace. We thank you for your love, your salvation. Let die will be done in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on November 8th. I would entertain a motion.
Go move.
Have a motion, second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have several public hearings tonight. Our first public hearing is to receive comments on a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' recommendation on a request for a special use permit for 1301 and 1311 Greenville Street.
Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised. I would note your attention to item 8B where you actually vote on this request. At this time, we would take any public comment.
I think I'll ask Mr. Costle, if he will, to come forward and introduce this, and I think the applicant is also here.
That's correct. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As we discussed during the work session this morning, Councilman Gaskin had a specific request that I reach out to my counterpart in Peachtree City, which occurred earlier this afternoon. While speaking with a representative of their planning and zoning department, I was able to verify that Universal Environmental Services, their processing facility located in Peachtree City, has had one fire code violation at this point, which has since been resolved. Additionally, since calendar year 2014, the only incident that they're aware of is one minor spill that occurred earlier this year that's already been rectified. With that being said, the applicant is here with us this evening, Mr. Dusty Pap with Universal Environmental Solutions. I'll ask him to share with the council just an overview of their processing facility, and he'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. So I just want to kind of give a little introduction on what we intend to do with the property. So, we operate a used oil recycling facility in Peachtree City. We started the plant around 2013. We process somewhere around 140,000 gallons a day of used motor oil through the property. We have been continuing to expand the operation there at our facility. And as we've expanded it, we've kind of outgrown our ability to bring the used motor oil we need to feed the refinery in by rail. We currently do have rail at our facility, but we're kind of limited to about eight rail cars currently. And we need to be somewhere around 10 to 11 rail cars a day to feed our current needs at the refinery. So we started a project about a year ago to find another property somewhere where we could bring used oil from other locations to a facility and then put it onto trucks in order to get it to our facility in Peachtree City. We do operate around 34 facilities all around the southeast. We have 300 collection trucks that go out and collect the used oil from all these places. And in a lot of the satellite places that we have in other facilities, we bring the trucks in, we'll load a rail car up, and that's how it comes to Peachtree City. Because some of the locations are pretty far out, like Houston, up in Chicago, and Baltimore, some of the farther reached places. But, so what we would like to do with the facility there is just have the ability to bring rail cars to the facility, offload the rail cars into trucks, and then transport the trucks to Peachtree City to feed the plant. So that's what initially we would like to do with the property. Long term, we'd like to expand and have maybe a tank farm on the property as well, so that we could, you know, have some storage there. All the materials that we would be processing through the facility is non-hazardous, and we wouldn't be doing any kind of hazardous liquids on the property. Also, to do the transfer work that is required, it just basically requires an electric pump. So it's just an electric motor running. It's not an excessive amount of noise at all. You could easily speak, you know, at speaking voice above the sound of it. So it's much quieter than that. You know, having the trucks come in and out, we expect somewhere around 10 to 12 trucks a day in and out of the property to get the used oil and take it up to the refinery. So that would be over a 24-hour period. The trucks would be coming in and out of the property to grab the oil. No dust, no odor that would be admitted from this, you know, just because the product is not heated, it doesn't put out any kind of an odor. So that's kind of the operation that we intend to do at this facility, and I'd be very open if you have any questions about what we're doing.
Thank you for that. Any questions?
I have one. Have you all had any spills at your other locations?
So as stated by Mark, we did have an incident earlier this year where a truck left our facility and the dome lid wasn't closed all the way. As soon as we realized that had happened, we notified the driver and was able to stop him and stop the continuation of the spill. Immediately, we enacted our spill response team, and we went out and, you know, and helped clean up the spill, as well as we call a remediation team to help us as well. But, you know, in and out of our facility every day, we have somewhere around 50 trucks that come in and out, and that's five, six days a week that comes in and out of the facility. So our track record is really good, you know, as far as the spills go. We've never had a spill from our facility to leave our facility and go on to any of the neighboring properties either.
Any other questions?
So, all this property that these trucks are going to be loading on, they're all curved to catch any spills? And there's a slump pump there and all that good stuff?
That's the intent, to develop the property. We're going to install a road, so that the truck will be positioned on top of like a concrete pad, which would then drain to a, you know, a catch basin. So if there was a release, it would go there and we could stop it right away.
And where is your refinery?
It's located off the Dividend Drive in Peachtree City. I don't know if you're familiar with the area up there, but it's in the industrial park there. Interesting enough, we actually have a golf course that is directly across the street to where our main facility is and where we're doing all this work. We do not have, you know, any kind of complaints with the community. Additionally, there's actually a neighborhood as well, less than a mile away from where our facility is at. And even with all of that, you know, area being there, we've not had any issues with the community relations.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in council chambers who would like to speak on this item? The special use permit for 1301 and 1311 Greenville Street. Okay, seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and as council knows, there's a later action item. I'll move on to our public hearing to receive comments on a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation for proposed UDO text amendments. Ms. Kelsey.
Yes, sir. Again, the public hearing has been properly advertised, and we would take any comments at this time.
Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak on the proposed UDO text amendments? Okay, seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and I will move on to our final public hearing, which is to receive comments on a recommendation from the redevelopment agency to create TAD number six.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, again, the public hearing was properly advertised, and we would take any comments on this request.
Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak on the recommendation to create TAD number six? Okay, seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to petitions and communications, where I have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone four parcels on Bryant Lake Boulevard from traditional neighborhood residential to traditional neighborhood residential, corridor medium density residential to corridor medium density residential, and corridor mixed use to corridor mixed use.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Costle will give this report.
Okay.
As we discussed this morning, on November the 14th, our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended that four parcels totaling approximately 135 acres located immediately adjacent to Bryant Lake Boulevard be rezoned. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on December the 13th.
Make a motion, call for a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to call for a public hearing on December 13th. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costle. We also have the consideration of the special use permit for 1301 and 1311 Greenville Street. This is the item for which we had the public hearing earlier this evening, and this is ripe for council action.
Move that we approve the special use permit?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And that passes unanimously. Okay. We also have the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation to increase window sign coverage. Ms. Kelsey.
Again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Costle will give that report.
On November the 14th, our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended that our prohibited sign ordinance be modified in order to increase the maximum allowable window coverage percentage. The action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on December the 13th.
Motion to call for a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to call for a public hearing. Is there any discussion?
I had a question. Are we stating 70%?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
So on the 13th, there'll be a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to provide 70% coverage.
That is correct. Yes, Mayor.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costle. I'll move on to council member reports. Do any council members have anything they'd like to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In 2003, the City of LaGrange began honoring individuals exceptional achievements with a title entitled "The Flame of Excellence." "The Flame of Excellence" served to honor those who bravely lighted the way for others. Previously received recipients, rather, previous recipients of this award have been Cliff Rainey in 2003, Charles Foster in 2003, Bobby Carmichael in 2006, Stuart Gully in 2009, Charles Hudson Senior in 2012, and Spear Burdette in 2018. We're very pleased tonight to show our gratitude and appreciation by adding another name to this list of exceptional leaders in our community, Mayor Jim Thornton. Jim Thornton is currently serving as the 42nd Mayor of LaGrange. His first term began in January 2014, and he was re-elected to a third term that began in January 2022. Prior to his election as mayor, he served one four-year term on the LaGrange City Council, four-year term. Mayor Thornton was born and reared and educated in LaGrange. He graduated from LaGrange High School, LaGrange College, and the Emory University of Law School. After law school, Mayor Thornton returned to practice law in the beautiful city of LaGrange, Georgia, and has been doing so actively for 24 years. He is currently a partner with the law firm Thornton &amp; Graham, B.C., where he specializes in real estate transactions, estate planning, and corporate law. In addition to his elected leadership role, Mayor Thornton has a long and distinguished record of civic, I'm sorry, of community civic and church service. He has served as chairman of the LaGrange-Troup County Chamber of Commerce, has chaired the United Way of West Georgia fundraising campaign, has been a founding member, rather, of the West Georgia Health Foundation, and the Troup Care Clinic, and has been a member of the LaGrange Rory Club. Mayor Thornton and his wife are graduates of the LaGrange, LaGrange, Georgia class of 2008. Mayor Thornton is a lifelong member of the First United Methodist Church of LaGrange. He has served in numerous leadership roles in his church, is a regular Sunday School teacher, and has been certified as a lay speaker. He currently serves as chancellor of the North Georgia Conference of the United Methodist You have certainly been a great mayor, and sorry to see you go, but I'm so happy that you would be with GMA representing us, and I know that you would represent us very well. Church. We also give thanks to his wife for allowing him to come and take away the time from her. Corin, the City of LaGrange wishes him well in his new role at GMA, and we are thankful You are a very smart man, a very honest man, and a very fair man, and I say that from he will be remaining in our community here in the beautiful city of LaGrange, Georgia. my heart. Thank you, Mayor Thornton, and we want to present this to you tonight. I really love you and I appreciate you so very much.
Counsel.
Thank you.
I'll go to the first.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
I'm going to take the one tab.
Do any other council members have any report?
I can't follow that one, Mayor.
Any other council members?
He's pretty much said it all, but all of us have a lot of thoughts about our mayor. We hate to see him go. I'll say, one of the best mayors we've ever had, without a doubt. Fair, creative, dedicated, and so many more adjectives could be added to that. So we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cool.
Again, I can't outdo it, but, and I'm not even going to try. Coming onboard with this council and you as mayor, I've enjoyed everyone, Legree included. You guys are fantastic, and I can't compare him to any other mayors. I will say that I can compare him to the Beatles. Remember when John Lennon left the Beatles? They were making such good music. Corin's laughing because that would make her Yoko Ono. I say that in jest because, I mean, we had some good times and we made some good music up here, and I think the whole city has enjoyed the harmony. And, sir, I thank you for your friendship, for your leadership, and you're a good guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin.
And, no, just kidding.
I have a few closing comments that I will make, but I'll hold those till the end of the meeting. Any other council members have any report? Okay. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
Just one tonight, Mayor. We took bids this morning for some surplus property on SLY, a very small piece of land, about .20 acres. The bid that we received was only one. It was $13,000, $13,001, sorry, to William Jones. Staff would recommend approval. In the absence of the mayor, we would authorize, if the council would be so willing to authorize the city manager to execute those contracts.
Motion to accept the bid.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the bid and authorize the city manager to enter into the contract. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to resolutions. I have a resolution that is an endorsement of submission of the DDRLF application by DLDA for downtown projects at 205 Broad Street and 304 Broad Street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we discussed in work session this morning, staff would recommend approval. Again, this is only an endorsement for loan funds for the Enclovers site and the Truitt-Vanderbilt House through the downtown development.
Would approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we also have a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Troup County, City of Hogansville, and the City of West Point for SPOLOX six projects.
Yes, sir. As we discussed again, work session, staff would recommend approval of this intergovernmental agreement.
Would approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the intergovernmental agreement for SPOLOX. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We will move on to first reading of ordinances. I have UDO text amendments.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the city to allow commercial gardens within the TNR zoning district as a permitted use, to allow cottage developments within mixed-use zoning districts, and to provide a minimum floor area. Therefore, to clarify dwelling minimum floor area in all other districts, to allow unified development plans for certain properties under common ownership, to allow solar farms as a permitted use within the CPGI district, to modify front porch dimensional requirements for certain building types, to amend garage orientation requirements for townhome dwellings, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and affect the date and for other purposes.
And we have no second readings. We do have some board and agency appointments. We have the Historic Preservation Commission, three-year terms to succeed Gwen Redwine and Dick Daniel.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint Gwen Redwine and Dick Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we also have a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Troup County, City of Hogansville, and the City of West Point for SPOLOX six projects.
Yes, sir. As we discussed again, work session, staff would recommend approval of this intergovernmental agreement.
Would approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the intergovernmental agreement for SPOLOX. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We will move on to first reading of ordinances. I have UDO text amendments.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the city to allow commercial gardens within the TNR zoning district as a permitted use, to allow cottage developments within mixed-use zoning districts, and to provide a minimum floor area. Therefore, to clarify dwelling minimum floor area in all other districts, to allow unified development plans for certain properties under common ownership, to allow solar farms as a permitted use within the CPGI district, to modify front porch dimensional requirements for certain building types, to amend garage orientation requirements for townhome dwellings, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and affect the date and for other purposes.
And we have no second readings. We do have some board and agency appointments. We have the Historic Preservation Commission, three-year terms to succeed Gwen Redwine and Dick Daniel.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint Gwen Redwine and Dick Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have the Development Authority of the City of LaGrange, four-year terms to succeed Carl Von Epps, Tripp Penn, Edward Smith, Curtis Brown, and Susan Black. Yes?
I was going to say, I make a motion to reappoint Carl Von Epps, Tripp Penn, Curtis Brown, and Susan Black, and Mark Mitchell in the place of Edward Smith.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Carl Von Epps, Tripp Penn, Curtis Brown, and Susan Black, and to appoint Councilman Mark Mitchell in place of Edward Smith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Well, before I turn to Ms. Van Schor for closing comments, I would just like to just make a brief statement. As I end my last city council meeting, having served, as Dr. Edmondson mentioned, four years on the city council, and now approximately nine years as mayor, I've been through a lot of city council meetings. This will be the last that I will preside over. As I think you all know, or might suspect, this has been a very emotional time for me. It's been a very emotional day. This has been a time of transition, and certainly something that has weighed heavily on me. LaGrange is my hometown, and LaGrange is where I was born, raised, continue to live, and plan to live, you know, for the foreseeable future. So it's my hometown, and I think when you are honored to serve as an elected official in your hometown, as all of you have as well, that's quite a statement of support from the community, and it's something that I have not taken lightly. It's something that I have very much, I've very much taken seriously, and it has been the honor of my life. I am excited about this new opportunity, but I will truly miss all of you and this opportunity to serve and work together. I'm not going to go through a long litany of what we've seen in nine years, or even 13, if you add in the council before that. I think you all have been a part of that alongside with me, and I have enjoyed that. But certainly, we as a council and as a city staff have been committed to common goals. We've been committed to economic development and progress for the city. We've been committed to public safety, and we've been committed to improving the quality of life for all residents. And those are things that we have struggled through, we have worked through, but I am very proud of the record that we have created together during this time period. We have certainly seen that LaGrange is a growing and thriving community. You can go anywhere in town, any area of town, and you can see growth and progress taking place. We have made investments in public safety and in our city personnel to make sure that we have a high level of public safety, and we also have a high level of public service. I think our financial condition and infrastructure are as good as any community our size in the country. I'm very proud of that, that conservative financial management that we've enjoyed for decades, that we've been able to continue. And I'm very pleased with the investments that we have made in quality of life, in parks, in trails, in amenities in our downtown. People comment on it. People comment on it to me all the time, and I know they do to you, especially people who are visiting LaGrange for the first time, or maybe for the first time in a long time. And that's something that I think we can all be proud of. I appreciate all of you. I appreciate the help along the way. I appreciate the city council, appreciate their city staff. We have a phenomenal city manager. We have a great city staff, and I appreciate their support over the years. I certainly support, appreciate the support of the public, and particularly the support of my family, and appreciate them being here tonight as well. So, you know, it's a tremendous trust is placed upon you when you are elected to public office, and it's a trust that I think we all, and certainly I have tried to honor and to respect and to recognize that while we can have laughs and while we can enjoy the work together, at the end of the day, we have been entrusted with the stewardship of this community, and that is something that none of us have taken lightly, and certainly something that I haven't. I'm sure I've made mistakes along the way, and I'm sure there will be people willing to point those out to me, but I'm telling you, throughout my tenure, I have tried to do and make the decisions that I felt were in the best interest of the community as a whole. Not necessarily in what my friends wanted, or what my supporters wanted, or what, you know, one particular faction or neighborhood might want, but what seems to me to be in the best interest of the City of LaGrange as a whole community, not leaving out any of the 31,000 residents in our community in that calculation. I'm very confident in those people to select my successor, and I will simply conclude my comments tonight by saying thank you to the council, to the staff, to my family and friends, and to all the public. I thank you for this opportunity to serve you. It has been a great pleasure. Thank you very much. I will now call on Ms. Van Schor if she would like to close us.
Our good news for tonight, we have a video for you. We want to share in honor of you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, you know, thank you for everything you've done for the City of LaGrange. Thank you for everything you've done for the Fire Department. Thank you for everything you've done for me personally and professionally. You've always been someone I could talk to, and I really appreciate that. It meant a lot to me. You were always there when someone needed to talk with a kind word, an intelligent word. So good luck to you in your next endeavors, and I know you'll do well, but we sure will miss you, and we sure have appreciated you. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Jim, all of us just want to say congratulations and a job well done, and apparently you're not going to stop helping us. You're going to be up in Atlanta, helping the whole state of Georgia, and we really appreciate your effort there. You and You and Corin have done an awesome job for us here in LaGrange, and I hope you won't forget us here in continuing to work with our community. Your four years as a city councilman and nine years as a mayor have changed the whole landscape for LaGrange, and you're leaving it now in much better shape than when you found it. Thank you, Jim, and best of luck to you.
Congratulations, Mayor Thornton. I wish you only the best in your future endeavors. It has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you these past few years. You will be missed. GMA is lucky to have you.
Congratulations, Jim. We're gonna miss you at Thornton and Graham. Don't be a stranger.
Jim, I was all set up to do this big speech for you, you know, make it a big lavish presentation, but I just want to say, thank you for your friendship, um, over these past few years. You are my COVID battle buddy, and, um, I really appreciate you, uh, leading the city through a very tumultuous time, and I, I think we're all better off in the end for, for, for better or for worse. You, you've done a hell of a job, so thank you. And with that being said, man, I wish you all the best on whatever your plans are. Godspeed, you know, may the winds be at your back. And, uh, I feel like I'm supposed to do something, so, so long, farewell, I'll be to say goodbye.
Congratulations, Mayor, on your new position with the Georgia Municipal Association. Their gain will be our loss. It's been my pleasure to work with you and council over the last decade. I appreciate your leadership, your vision, and your friendship.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your service to the citizens of LaGrange. You've made LaGrange a better place for all of us. I know we've not agreed on everything over the past seven years, but, uh, you've done a great job, and we appreciate it.
To the Honorable Mayor Jim Thornton, Mayor of City of LaGrange, the people's mayor, just want to say congratulations to you and your family on your new job with GMA. I know that you will thoroughly enjoy it, but we will surely miss you as mayor here at City of LaGrange. You have served the people with diligence, faithfulness, and also with willingness to listen, and that means a lot to me as a citizen of LaGrange and an employee of the City of LaGrange. So, once again, we just want to say congratulations to you and your family on your new position with GMA, but we're going to surely miss you here with the City of LaGrange. All the best in all that you do to our mayor, Jim Thornton.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and your support to city staff, as well as to the city of LaGrange. You will surely be missed, and we hope that you'll come back and see us again soon.
I want to say thank you for the good deeds that you've done all around LaGrange and Troup County and the state of Georgia. Having the opportunity to serve with you on the board with the Georgia Municipal Association was always a treat. Now, to have you as one of the big bosses at the Georgia Municipal Association, I know is gonna be a treat for all the staff and team members, and, um, seeing you working along with Larry Hanson, I know the state of Georgia is in great hands, and the rest of the team there. So, to you and Corin, I say, go on, enjoy the adventures that await you, and, uh, I know you'll forever be connected to LaGrange because you've got a special lady here. Nope, not me, but your mom. So, thanks for all you've done, thanks for all you will do, and God bless.
Congratulations on your new position at GMA. I know you've done a lot of great things at the city of LaGrange as mayor. I'm sure you'll do a lot of great things at GMA in your new position. We will miss you, and the city of LaGrange was lucky to have you.
Congratulations, Mayor, on your new job. Wishing you love, happiness, and huge success on your new job. We will really miss you, and good luck to you.
Jim, uh, we really don't want to be saying goodbye, so we won't really say goodbye, but we do appreciate everything you've done for the city. Uh, you and I go way back, and, um, I've sort of watched your path as you've matured and, and taken on great challenges and done great jobs with everything, but this has been the greatest, and we, we appreciate everything you've done for the city, and we wish you good luck in, in your future endeavors. I hope it works out well for you, and, um, we'll save a spot. You can come back sometime, anytime you want to.
Jim, you're one of the smartest guys I know. Also, just a lot of fun to be around, very enjoyable to be, uh, working with you for the last many, many years. You do a great job creating a sense of teamwork amongst yourself and the council and the staff, and, uh, I think that's one of the reasons that the city of LaGrange is looked upon so favorably by all the other cities in the state of Georgia, and we're certainly gonna miss you.
It has been such an honor and a privilege to serve while you have been the mayor of LaGrange. Always knew you were destined for greatness. I'm just lucky to be serving and working at the city while you've been mayor. So, thank you for inspiring me to get involved in our community and to serve our community. We're really happy for you. Congratulations on all of your successes and all of your future successes. Know that you have a huge cheering section and a fan club back here in LaGrange. Can I call you Jim now?
Mayor Thornton, just want to tell you, thank you for your dedication to the citizens of LaGrange for the time that you've been mayor, and, uh, also want to thank you for the support and leadership in my five years of being on council. We're surely gonna miss you, and you set the next mayor up with big shoes to fill.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. This is certainly bittersweet for me this morning, as I think about how much you've meant to me personally here in Troup County, and now that you've taken this great opportunity for you and your, your wife to, to move up, uh, I'm going to miss you tremendously. I think most people don't realize that probably you and I talk about twice a day at least, something great's going on. We might talk four or five times a day, and text many more. But I know that you have been dedicated to this community. You love LaGrange, you've poured your heart and soul in this community, and you've been a great leader. A lot of progress has been made in this community during this time, and we know that we are recognized around the state for what great things happened here in LaGrange, and you're a large part of that. But while I'm going to miss you personally, all those meals with some of those, uh, Kia representatives and others from around the community, and the great times we had there, while I'm gonna miss you personally, I know that you'll do a great job for the state of Georgia in your new, in your new role, and that you will always have LaGrange and Troup County in your heart. So, best wishes to you.
Mayor Jim Thornton, thank you so very much for all you've done for the city of LaGrange. I was here when you came, and, uh, I was a little hesitant, wondering if you're gonna be the kind of person that we needed on the council, but, uh, I see that you have been a wonderful, wonderful guy, been a great mayor, and, uh, sorry to see you go, but I certainly hope that you will have a great time, and I know that GMA will receive your very best, because everything you do, you always give every, all that you have. Thank you, Jim, for all you've done. Thank you for what you're doing, and we thank you for what you're going to do, because I know that you will always have LaGrange on your mind, and you will make sure that we get everything we need for the city of LaGrange while you're there at GMA. God bless you, God keep you. We love you.
Mayor Thornton, I'm really gonna miss you. Uh, you've been a guiding light for this community. I'm gonna miss our coffee breaks together as you come and walk over to City Hall. I'm gonna miss those movie quotes that, that you give me every day. I appreciate all that you have done for me personally, um, and again, Mayor, I will never forget our karaoke days in Korea, and just remember what happened in Korea stays in Korea. I, I am wishing you and Corin the best. I'm looking forward to working with you on the other side at GMA.
Jim, just want to take a minute to thank you for 14 years of extraordinary leadership, ten as, as mayor and, and four as city council member. Our community's infinitely better because of your time as mayor, and, and people's lives are better because of your leadership. You're always a, a big, big thinker, big strategic thinker, always a voice of reason, and, um, you just represented us extremely well, both inside the community and, and around the state, both people who supported you and, and people who didn't. So, we're gonna miss you. We know you're gonna do big things in your next role, have an even bigger sync, uh, impact on a state level, but, um, we're gonna miss you as mayor. You're the right guy at the right time. You're the best mayor I know. You're the worst singer I know, but, um, again, I'm, I'm grateful for all you've done to help transform our community.
Mayor, it has been an absolute joy to serve as your city attorney, particularly in view of the fact that you don't really need one. You have brought to the job an energy and insight and a capacity that is simply unmatched, and somehow you've done it all with humor. And of all the traits that we've enjoyed of your leadership over the last several years, I think I'm going to miss the humor the most. Thank you for your service.
But once again, once again, yes, once again, I'll just say, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to, to serve in this capacity, and, um, I look forward to working with, with all of you in a different capacity. Thank you all very much. We will stand, since we're all standing, we will, we will stand adjourned.